Good evening. It's a little past seven o'clock and I'd like to call this meeting of the Urbana City Council to order. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Aye, thank you. Ms. Ammons? Mr. Brown?
Here.
Mr. Jacobson?
Here.
Mr. Madigan?
Here.
Ms. Marlin?
Here.
Mr. Roberts? Mr. Smythe?
Here.
Mayor Pressing?
Here. The first item of business is the approval of the minutes of the previous meeting. We have two of them actually, August 4th, 2014, and a special meeting on August 8th. Dennis? Okay. Motion by Smythe?
Second.
Seconded by Jacobson. Any discussion? Yes, Bill?
I have one correction and, let's see, page four of August 4th. Number H, the votes were seven A and zero nay, but when they're itemized Carol was listed as no, so she should be yes.
Number H?
Yeah.
And this is for Community Foundation?
Right.
So that's incorrect thing?
So the action was right, it was seven I, zero nay, but when it's itemized, they should all be yes.
Okay, alright. Is that okay, Madam Clerk? She does want to speak?
I'll check what my book says.
Okay.
If it's okay, it's okay.
Alright, we have a motion and a second.
I have a...
Yes, Mr. Madigan?
Are we doing these in block both minutes?
Sure, that was the motion.
Yeah. On the August 8th minutes, it does correctly list that I was absent. I'm wondering if I could have the indulgence of the council to list that I was absent because the entire subject matter of the meeting was something that I would have to recuse myself from. So, I would like to have an asterisk there about why I was absent, if that would be okay.
That's fine. We could do that, right? Are these two changes okay with the maker of the motion and the second? Okay. All those in favor of the corrected minutes for August 4th and August 8th, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion carries. Are there any additions to the agenda? Don't see any petitions and communications. I have Jane DeLuce.
Jane DeLuce would visit Champaign County, address 108 South Neal, downtown Champaign. Tonight, I just wanted to recognize the City of Urbana for being a partner for fiscal year 2014 with the efforts that you contributed toward hosting the IHSA state championships here in Champaign County. So I brought with me a certificate and we appreciate City of Urbana's support as we bring those countywide events here to Champaign County for tourism. So, that's it. I also have a copy of our new visitors guide that I wanted to make sure everybody got, as well as what the impact of tourism is in Champaign County, a flyer that identifies what our numbers are for this area. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Bishop King James Underwood and Reverend Evelyn Underwood don't wish to speak, but for the record, they're still concerned about the Ellis subdivision sewer problems. Then I have Eamon Quo, is that how you pronounce your name? Eamon Quo and Nathan Palowski. Would you please state your name and address for the record?
Eamon Quo.
I mean, have a seat and then talk into the microphone because this is all recorded. You're going to be very famous after this. You may already be famous.
Eamon Quo, 504 West Vermont.
Nathan Palowski, 2106 Vauder.
Did you want to say something, Charlie?
Yes, this was left off the agenda. We asked this, put on the agenda a special report and so we promised these gentlemen ten minutes.
Okay. Is that okay with the council?
Is that okay with everybody?
Alright.
And we can't find, oh, slideshow. Alright, well, we are the Urbana Trash Improvement Pilot Project. Well, you're probably wondering why Urbana's trash would need an improvement pilot project. Basically, here's the problem. Urbana's garbage hauling is really, really inefficient. We've got eight garbage haulers in town. Most other places have a number of garbage haulers, but our eight garbage haulers are going down each street each week, which means we've got up to eight times the noise, greenhouse gases, road damage, and fossil fuel use. And that's just to get the same thing done that any other city on earth does.
And also, I would like to add that since they go all over the city, they have to start earlier to adapt to their longer route.
Which is why people have been having these complaints of haulers very early in the morning. So, U-Tip. It's Eamon Quo, me, with some surveying assistance from Nathan Palowski here, and Nate Horner who couldn't make it unfortunately. And our main question to start with was, do people want us to make garbage haul more efficient and if so, how can we do that? So, we had three sub questions for this. First of all, how much overlap is there in the haulers? Second, how happy are people with the way things are? Just to know how much interest there would be in change essentially. And what do people want in a hauler and in a hauling system? So, first of all, let's just start with how much overlap there is between the haulers. This is Vermont, this is the area we surveyed. We didn't get all of these houses. Some of them were unoccupied and some of them had haulers that came on a different street. So, this, the following map shows those removed. The ones in purple are houses we received a survey response from. Orange indicates no response and red indicates refusal. So, how much overlap is there in the hauler?
Well, there are small haulers that serve less than 10% of the people and they're wasteful because they still have to go down as much road, but they're easy to change and so few people actually have them.
Alright, so this is a picture of our surveyed area, not including houses we didn't count as actually Vermont houses. This is a symbol key, these are the eight haulers of Urbana. We got a little lucky. These are the eight haulers that, or these are the four haulers of those eight that are actually on Vermont hauling. This next map shows where each of these haulers is. As you can see, Chris's is very much the dominant hauler. Then comes Dale Levitt and ABC and Republic are both quite, quite small. So, this is, this is the same map essentially in pie form. Again, you can see that Chris's and Dale Levitt make up a little over 75% of the haulers in Urbana. Republic and ABC are both relatively tiny. So, how much overlap is there? Well, there's a lot. There's four times more trucks on Vermont than there need to be, which is admittedly half as bad as it could be. There are two small haulers and this is good to know. By convincing only five houses to change, we could cut pollution, noise, and all those other things by 25%. By convincing a total of 13 houses to change, you could cut pollution, noise, and all that in half. And by the way, that 13 would not be on top of the original five. Second of all, how happy are people with the way things are? Which breaks down into two further questions. How happy are people with their haulers? And do people think that change is important? So, this is our who likes their hauler empty scale.
Negative two means very unhappy with hauler. Positive two means very happy with hauler. One means happy. Negative one means unhappy. Zero means no opinion.
And this is an average. So, as you can see, Chris's at one and a half is not only the most dominant, it's also the best hauler according to people's opinions. Then comes Dale Levitt, ABC, and Republic. ABC is actually closer to no opinion than happy, although you will notice that all of these are in the positives. So, here's our change is important scale. Would you like to explain the range?
So, negative two thought change was extremely, they extremely disagreed that we needed to make hauling more efficient and two was extremely agreed and one, negative one were agreed, zero, no opinion.
Negative one was not agreed, negative one was unagreed.
Yeah.
Alright, obviously, negative two, very low, that's one person. Negative one was five. I believe 11, I think? Some number. And as you can see, it's a bell curve centering around one, which means that most people think it's important. If it were centering around zero, we'd have little to no consensus. If it was negative two, we would have a very firm opinion that things should not be messed with. So, this is a similar graph, the scale is the same, and I think this is very interesting. As you can see, Chris's and Dale Levitt, the two largest and least, and most liked haulers, have the people who believe the least in change, while ABC and Republic, the smallest and least liked haulers, serve people who believe the most in change. This is very good because these people are few in numbers, unhappy with their hauler, and eager for a change in the system. So it'll be easy to change those 13 houses. So, how happy are people? Well, you want to get some?
Well, they're generally happy, but they do want changed. Most people have been pro-change, only a few are against it. And people with smaller haulers are more likely to think that change is important and are not attached to their hauler, so they would be willing to change their hauler.
Alright, so, third and final question. What do people want in a hauler and a hauling system? Basically, how do we move forward? Well, this breaks down into three questions. What information convinces people to change to a dominant hauler? What concerns about a change in the hauling situation need to be addressed? And what features would make a good new system? So, what do people care about in a hauler? It turns out that the most important things across the boards are price and a consistent pickup. And then there's variable pickups or pay by mass, essentially being able to pay only a couple of dollars because you only put out this much trash each week. Variable pickup would not having, would be not having your trash picked up every week. Ease of communication, pretty simple, just being able to talk to your hauler. And a couple of people cared about yard waste, noise, and backdoor service. So what do people care about in a hauler system?
Well, we didn't get much response for this question, but a few cared about having one hauler per street and very few cared about, don't let anyone go out of business, want the choice of a hauler, don't want a price increase.
Alright, so what do people want in a hauler and a hauling system? Well, people will change for a cheaper hauler that comes each week and has by mass pricing. People want to hear that there will be less trucks, nobody will go out of business, and they'll have a choice of their hauler. And a good system would have a few cheap and consistent haulers, preferably ones that would pay by mass, but that's not really necessary. So what does all this mean? First of all, we've got a very high potential for change. Haulers are either very dominant, or either dominant or quite small, it looks like. The smaller haulers are least liked and their customers are most enthusiastic about a change in the system. This is especially important because the smaller haulers do just as much damage as large haulers. So, you'd get just as much reward for changing those five houses that have ABC, I believe?
Yes.
ABC or Republic, not sure off the top of my mind, as you would for changing the 42 that have Chris's. So, people's concern with price inconsistency tells us that a good garbage hauler is nothing more than a functional garbage hauler. And insisting on variable pickup or pay by mass would be very popular, would definitely gain you some support. So, Vermont?
Well, our plan is to not contact the people who have Chris and Dale Levitt.
Well, not contact them in a manner trying to
Yeah.
Let them know that they could change their hauler because while they can, they really shouldn't be doing that.
Yeah. Convince those who we've surveyed to change to Chris or Dale Levitt, meaning we'll give them information about cheaper, the Chris and Dale Levitt and...
Right, we'll tell them that they could have a cheaper hauler that is more popular amongst those it has and they would likely be doing their area service by reducing the number of garbage haulers. We're also going to try and raise awareness in the area so those who we haven't surveyed yet will change haulers if they don't have Chris's or Dale Levitt. And we're going to try and set up a system where enough people have Chris's or Dale Levitt that when somebody else moves in, they will get Chris's or Dale Levitt. So, in terms of city, we have four potential suggestions. The lowest cost one would be simply encouraging some more U-Tip-like projects. Medium cost?
A city could facilitate areas to organize or bid the contracts for one hauler.
The highest cost would be splitting up the city. You could even use the U-Haul zones and contracting with the private haulers to reduce the price. And of course, the highest cost would simply be to take over hauling. But of course, that could also potentially be the most beneficial. So, just a couple of things to remember if you don't take anything else away from this. While people do want a change in the system, they're hesitant. When we talked to people about the project, they were much more enthusiastic than when we asked them how important they felt the change was. And any changes will be more popular if they reduce the price, make pickup consistent, offer variable hauling or pay by mass pricing, and ease of communication. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Any questions? Charlie? Oh, Bill?
Yeah, it was interesting that the two dominant ones were the cheapest. I think we posted the prices on our website and those were both the $16 a month ones. So do you think you'll take more convincing than just to let people know that there are cheaper options?
We doubt it.
Or do you think people have other considerations?
Cost was like the highest concern, so...
Yeah. Other than that, people, people essentially were avoiding the question by saying that as long as their garbage hauler picks up their trash, they'll be happy.
Yeah.
Otherwise, price was the only actual concern about garbage hauling. Anything else?
I just wanted to say thanks for, I think this has been a really thorough survey. I know we've had, I actually tried to survey the Woonah List about two years ago and got much less response over a broader area, but I think it was consistent with what you found as far as number of haulers and dominance of a few haulers, so...
Yeah, we've checked our results against that and they make sense.
So, yeah, good luck with changing people.
Alright, thanks. Oh.
Diane?
Since two-thirds of the households in the city are rental and people who live in those households don't really, most of the time don't have control over who their haulers are, did you get a sense of how many rental versus owner-occupied homes were on the street, on Vermont Street? And your thoughts on how citywide you'd handle the rental versus owner-occupied?
Well, we're only here for another year. So, we're not going to be doing anything citywide.
Okay. Just something to think about, yeah.
Well, we actually think big apartment complexes will actually be easier to have change to a particular hauler, just because price is going to be so much more of a concern for them.
Yeah.
Are you aware that the Urbana City Council a number of years ago took up this subject?
Yes.
Did you talk with anybody about what the public reaction was?
Yes, we did.
Okay, I'm glad you did that.
People were surprisingly enthusiastic given the last attempt.
Maybe they weren't involved in it, I don't know. Okay, well, thank you very much.
I think we have...
Oh, Mike, you have a question, go ahead.
Yeah, well, as probably, well, not probably, as the most conservative member of the city council, it might come as a shock to you that I'm frankly supportive of your efforts because a city has to think about things like wear and tear on roads.
Right.
And those kind of issues that do impact the city budget. And in fact, Charlie and I had a discussion about this a few months ago about zoning the garbage pickup.
Oh, yeah.
And, and I don't think that's necessarily an anti-business kind of thing because if you, if you take into consideration the current amount of business that each garbage hauler has today and you divide zones to a point where they can be competitive in their bidding for those zones, they can determine their own destiny. And you have one truck going up and down a street as opposed to six or eight. I, frankly, I think we have at least six going up and down my street.
Well, if it's a bigger street, that's likely.
Yeah, and I, so I, I really appreciate your efforts here and I for one would be willing to take up this issue and withstand the phone calls about people and their allegiances to their trash haulers because the bottom line is, at the end of the day, you want your trash taken away. We don't want to put people out of business over it. But zoning is a rational alternative to what we have here today. And I lived in Springfield for 20 years and Springfield has zoning and it works.
Yeah. Just something I'd like to add. You mentioned wear and tear on roads. We mentioned that as well earlier, but it's interesting to note, these things can weigh, well, the ones in Urbana weigh anywhere from one to two tons.
Empty.
And they're, yeah, empty. One to two tons empty. And they are stopping and then they're idling and then they're going again, which of course means they're sitting on the same point on the road for a very long time and they've only got four tires. So, well, I think some of them have more.
Six. Most of them have six.
Alright, well, I should have counted that.
Well, but anyway, I don't want to belabor this, but I really appreciate your efforts and it's informative and I really do think that there is a solution here that would not impact local businesses, would not impact the pickup service. And then the one other interesting thing about this is, if I have a complaint about my service, and I have done this, this is before I was on the council, I called the city because my trash didn't get picked up and it was on the curb at the time, the city rightfully said to me, we can't really do anything about that because it's a contractual relationship between you and your hauler.
Right.
If it was a zone system, and the city has to take this into consideration because then there's going to be some staff time and follow-up probably.
Right.
But if people do have complaints, there is a recourse.
Mm-hmm.
So, lots of positives to zoning.
We agree.
Yes.
I'm sorry, one follow-up. Why do you say that's a higher cost? Zoning?
Well, not zoning, I meant, I couldn't, I couldn't figure out what the word for nationalization would be if it was a city.
It's not really nationalization though. What you're doing is you're bidding out, you're bidding out...
Franchising.
Yeah, you're basically franchising the city. You're bidding out zones.
Which, which option do you mean? The highest cost or the higher cost?
You said there was a high cost.
The higher cost would be like if we had one hauler for the entire city.
Oh, well, of course. No, we're talking about having the same number of haulers but bidding out zones, so it would still be a competitive process.
Well, you'd have to have staff members, you'd have to have people negotiating with the public and the haulers. That's, that's pretty much it.
Yeah.
They're, they're not all that expensive. Medium cost is essentially telling streets to organize themselves and low cost is just finding a couple of teenagers and throwing them out on the streets with t-shirts.
Very good.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of the council. Nice to see everybody again. My name is Neil Malone with the Illinois Association of Realtors. I'm sorry, am I not picking up? There you go, thank you. I'd assumed that would be called on during the actual discussion of the ordinance.
Do you want to wait till then?
I'd love to if that's okay.
Okay.
That might be more appropriate. Thank you.
Alright. I do have a proclamation and that is, whereas, this is about library card signup month. Whereas the library card is the most important school supply of all, and whereas libraries are an essential service for the nation's children, and whereas libraries bridge the digital divide by providing a full range of information and services to children and adult learners, and whereas libraries offer free access to important educational resources for all ages and types of learners, and whereas libraries continue to evolve and expand their services in ways that bring value to their communities, and whereas a free library card is the smartest card you can own, now therefore I, Laurel Lund Pressing, Mayor of the City of Urbana, proclaim September 2014 as Library Card Signup Month in the City of Urbana and encourage everyone to sign up for the smartest card at your library. And we have our library director, Urbana Free Library Director, Celeste Choate, and she has a brief presentation.
Thank you very much. So thank you for allowing me to come back and talk with you for just a moment about your library. So the library offers many things to our cardholders and to non-residents who want to come and use free services like coming to programs and such. Everything from zombie proms and fairy tale balls to homework help in a cafe. So, we just want to say again, there's a lot your library can offer you. We hope many people will come and sign up for your card. It is the smartest card in your wallet and you've already paid for it. So we want to make sure that you get the return on your investment. And we, I also want to reach out personally to the council to say I'd love to meet with you and see which groups in your community, which constituents, do you think the library could be serving better or differently? And perhaps we can talk about ways to make introductions so we can go to these groups and to these communities and see how we can get them signed up for library service and how we can reach out to them. We've got four sites already set up for Library Card Signup Month and we've already been to the schools this past couple of weeks to get students signed up as well. We just want to put the invitation out there to meet with you personally and get out into the community. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any questions for Celeste? Okay. I think we're all card-carrying council members. Library card-carrying council members. Okay, I don't think we have any unfinished business to deal with tonight. Reports of standing committees, the committee of the hall?
I was chairman of the committee of the hall, but I need to recuse myself from the first two items, so I'll hand that off to Diane.
Okay.
On behalf of the committee of the hall, I move approval of ordinance number 2014-08-078. Ordinance is amending Chapter Three of the Urbana City Code to amend Urbana City Code Chapter Three, Article Three, Section Three dash forty-two concerning Class T liquor licenses.
Second.
Okay, motion by Marlin, seconded by Ammons. Any discussion? Charlie?
Well, there were, in your packet was a revised version with some corrections. There was one notable change and that was the open-ended was changed to 20 per year and I think Natalie might want to address a few things, but I appreciate the changes and I think that's a good, good in-between point to work from. If it's not enough or it's too many, we'll be able to figure that out. So thank you for the change. And I assume we're moving the corrected version that came in our packets, right? Yes, okay.
Right. Did you want to say something, Natalie?
I'm here to answer any questions if you...
Okay, questions for Natalie. Okay, so we have the revised version. A motion and a second. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Okay, Ms. Ammons?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobson?
Yes.
Ms. Marlin?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
That motion carries. Diane?
I move approval of ordinance number 2014-08-079, which is an ordinance amending Urbana City Code Chapter Fourteen, Section Fourteen dash seven regarding the schedule of fees for the T3 liquor license fee.
Second.
Okay, motion by Marlin, seconded by Ammons. Any discussion? Would the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Ammons?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobson?
Yes.
Ms. Marlin?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes, I guess our time is up, right?
So that, motion carries. Mike, you want to come back and read this?
Alrighty then. The committee recommended for approval ordinance number 2014-08-080, an ordinance amending Urbana City Code Chapter 12.5 to add a new Article Four regarding relocation assistance for tenants. On behalf of the committee, I so move.
Okay, motion by Madigan, seconded by Smythe. And we have a couple of people that want to comment on this. Neil Malone?
Again, thank you, it's great to be back. As I mentioned, my name is Neil Malone. I am the General Affairs Director for the Illinois Association of Realtors. I work with seven of our local associations through the...
of our local associations through the central part of the state, and I have been here before. It is always nice to be here. We have some concerns on this particular ordinance, and I apologize, I wasn't able to reach out to all of the members individually before the meeting. I, I didn't receive this until last Wednesday, and I had to go back and actually watch the proceedings from last week on the internet podcast of, of the meetings. Last week, this was described as a codification of existing law, and I think that would be wildly inaccurate to classify this as such. It is, in fact, quite a departure, and I think that the language contains a, a number of areas of concern. Specifically, I think it goes further than it's being presented as doing in, in the comments from last week. I would agree with some of the testimony last week that most landlord-tenant situations are either controlled by common law or by contractual law. I think this goes further than anybody anticipated in that it does not just apply to those very specific problem landlord situations that were mentioned. It would, according to the ordinance, it would actually be activated in a couple of ways. One, it would be activated if there were a situation, as, the way it's phrased, it opens it up to either being triggered by a revocation or amending of the registration permit and/or if it were to, to be in violation of, the quote was, "Will be designated as unlawful to occupy due to conditions created by the landlord that violate one or more applicable code statutes or ordinances," or the loss or denial. So, you could have situations, even with the exemption language in here providing for it not being activated by a lawful eviction or by criminal activity, there are situations in which this could apply to the, not the situations that you guys are, are trying to target by, by the language in the, in the act. As I mentioned, common law dictates already that part of this is already taken care of in existing law, in that if a landlord is already required to refund prepaid rent, and there's an entire, there's actually two different statutes that actually deal with how security deposits are handled. That would both be the Illinois Security Deposit Return Act or the Security Deposit Interest Act. In some cases, those are actually even interest-bearing accounts that are not really taken into account in this ordinance. Tenants, by contractual law though, are liable for costs associated with repairs caused by tenants' intentional or negligent misuse of a property. Okay? This cuts out portion for criminal misuse. It does not really address these negligent misuse. Example I would give is a tenant's living in a unit, they have a, a maintenance situation that they don't report to the property owner. Leaking pipes, or a leaking roof, et cetera. That situation compounds itself that the owner doesn't have knowledge of it because it's not been reported to the owner, and then it becomes uninhabitable. Not only would this language refund that negligent tenant their security deposit, it would also penalize the property owner with having to relocate or house for up to 14 days in a hotel that, that negligent individual, just based on the drafting of, of the, of the ordinance. Additionally, there are a number of, this is kind of a, kind of a somewhat intense departure from what other communities do. I know it was mentioned that you, we talked to other cities as to how they handle this issue. I've not seen any city in Illinois, according to my colleagues, who do it this way in any other community in Illinois. So, I'm unsure as to what that is. Additionally, there are, there are many phrases and, and wordings in this ordinance that really leave this open-ended in terms of cost to the impacted property owner. I mean, you've got terms like cost of a physical move. Now, I don't know if that means renting a U-Haul for someone, or if that means getting four guys from Mayflower or one of the moving companies to come and physically move everything in there. There are terms like reasonable efforts to relocate. I don't know what that means. I don't know what a reasonable effort is, or even according to the ordinance, who would judge the reasonableness of the effort to relocate? In addition, there's no limits or safeguards as to-
We have one minute, Mr. Malone.
Thank you. There's no limits or safeguards as to how much of a cost could be incurred in this situation, nor is there any mechanism for ascribing the validity of those costs. I, I mean, it, it says how quickly a property owner has to pay these costs, but there's no adjudication as to whether those are reasonable costs, whether they're even not fraudulent costs added on. I mean, it, it really is wide, is wide open. And then finally, a lot of this on the rental registration side is predicated on, on the, the classification system that the council did a number of years ago with regard to the properties. There's some subjectivity in those, including the inspection schedule can be, for example, made more stringent if the neighborhood is bad, or if there are, are issues in the neighborhood that, that the individual property owner clearly does not control.
I will move.
Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Malone? Do you have a question? Carol?
I just wanted to clarify, Mr. Malone stated about open-ended phrases. So, under, for instance, Item D, where you talked about the cost of physical move.
Item D under?
Section 12.5-47. This is just dealing with the relocation assistance payment as defined. Under here, it describes specifically as a moving company or rental of moving van, of which is still at the discretion of the landlord. So, the person can't just give them a bill. The landlord determines what the cost associated with that move would be. Is, is that what you mean by the open-ended phrases?
Well, in terms of, it says that, under, are you talking about under F?
Under D, under D.
Under D, I'm sorry.
I just kind of underlined D. You said reasonable efforts.
Yeah, the cost of physical moves such as a moving company or-
Uh-huh.
-a rental moving van. It doesn't say whether that is the landlord's prerogative or the tenant's prerogative, or if there's a, a reason, or a, a rhyme or reason as to how that's determined. Additionally, if you look at under section, under section F, "The tenant household is given less than 30 days' notice in which to vacate the dwelling unit pursuant to Section 12.546, and where the tenant, after reasonable efforts, is unable to relocate directly into another habitable dwelling unit." I don't know what a reasonable effort to locate a habitable dwelling unit is. "Landlord shall be obligated to reimburse the tenant household for any and all costs which the tenant household incurs in relocating to and staying at a local hotel or motel." There's no cost limit as to what that hotel is. I mean, is that, you know, is that a, a-
You're saying it's not the IH Hotel?
Well, I mean, is, is it, is it a, a Days Inn, or is that, you know, the Waldorf Astoria? I, I don't know what it reasonable is in terms of how that's written. It, it does, it does limit it at 14 days, but, you know, hotels can vary pretty significantly in terms of cost and, and what would be reasonable to, reasonable to whom, I guess, is the question.
Thank you. Any other questions? Eric?
So, let me see if I can figure out where you're at. You're not objecting to requiring the landlord to take some responsibility if a tenant must move because the property has, you know, become unlivable, but you'd like there to be a cap on the cost?
Well, I think that anybody who has heard me speak here before, we're always more than happy to work with the council on, on, we, we hate these situations as much or more as, as the general public does because it makes landlords viewed in a bad light. And we, I'm certainly not here in defense of bad actors. Clearly, if you look at contract law or common law, the landlord has a responsibility to maintain that property, and there should be consequences if they don't. I, I just, this, this ordinance came up fairly quickly. I know it's been in discussion for quite a while, but it really has gotten virtually no input from our group. I spoke with the apartment association, the Department Owners' Association, and I don't think they had participated in the, in the drafting of this. I, I think we would be more than willing to, to work on something going forward, and I just think there are a lot of unanswered questions to it as it exists. So, whether that's a, whether that is narrowing the focus as to, so this does apply to those problems that we're talking about, that are, at least we're trying to address, or, or how we go about that, I'm not sure, but I, my group would love to be involved in those discussions.
Okay. Answer to your question about what cities. I know we looked at cities around the country. I remember Cincinnati and Seattle.
I, we would be-
We may have looked at Illinois once, too.
We would be the first in Illinois to provide this.
Yeah, well, we're not, we're used to being the first, so that's okay. But we want to do it right.
Definitely, definitely.
Okay, well, thank you very much. Oh, are there our questions? Okay, Diane?
I don't know whether this would be Libby or Jim, but can someone comment on the issue of, in Section 12-5-46, the, the word "or," as, as Mr. Malone pointed out? Last paragraph on the page. Should it be "and"?
I think he said, Mr. Malone was saying whose own illegal conduct, and I think he was saying illegal or negligent conduct, if I heard that correctly.
Oh, I think that's one of the concerns. In terms of the, the "or," I, I mean, it, it doesn't necessarily differentiate between, between situations in which, between situations that cause it to be uninhabitable. And then second, when it opens it up on the rental registration side, the, the inspection schedule for differently classified properties can vary greatly, and some of the things that can impact that schedule are not necessarily within the control of, of, I mean, the property itself is in control of, of a specific property owner, but the, the manner in which the inspections happen can be influenced by things outside of their control. If you look under, in your rental registration program, the actual ordinance talks about, let me find it here. I'm sorry, terribly sorry for the wait. You know, things that actually start, the establishment of the inspection schedule, there can be things that, that cause that property to be inspected. Things like neighborhood complaints, particular, particular structure in the area of rental properties, and/or as indicated by fire or police calls about exterior nuisance complaints about the structure. I mean, there are things that can get you into a heightened level of inspection, just based on virtue of where that property is located, what might be happening around that property. As, to me, it, it does allow for some subjectivity as to how one classifies a, a, a class-
I think Libby wants to comment on that.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, no, the classifications are just on the building, completely within the power of the landlord. So, I don't think that it's subjective. I think those are objective classifications. The lowest classifications, there really is a huge problem, and I don't think we're talking about one or two code violations. We're talking about unfit for occupancy in a failing classification. So, I don't think that the neighborhood would really affect that whatsoever. It's unique to the property, those classifications and the code violations that would lead to the determination that it could not be occupied.
I'm looking for-
It's a situation where the tenants are required to move.
But again, it does not, it does not qualify between situations that were actually the landlord's fault, or could be the fault of the tenant.
Yeah, and, and actually, he's, I think I, I see where he's coming from. Having this "or," loss of or denial of rental registration, it could, it does not specifically say it's due to negligence on the part of the landlord.
Thank you.
It could be a fire that would cause it to be losing your rental registration because it's uninhabitable. It's just the way, you're right, the way-
I think it's unclear, I guess.
This "or" in here leaves it open. It should say "and." I mean, that would, that would tie it to the first thing there. Because the, the whole, the whole thing this is trying to get at is the, the few people who create through their own negligence, conditions where it absolutely is unfit for occupancy, and that is the intent of this. And, and I, I kind of assumed that input, you guys had given some input on this.
No, ma'am. And again, I could not agree more with you in that-
Yeah, I mean, that's the intent.
I'm not here at all in defense of, of the landlord landlords. That, I, I just, when you cast a big net, you catch a lot of fish, you know, so.
Right. Well, we don't want a lot. We just want the few who are causing the problems.
The reason I think that this needs further discussion and refining.
Eric?
Yeah, we're the opposite of the Marines. We're looking for a few bad ones.
And women, but, you know.
And women, yes. But the, you know, you've raised, I wanted to ask a factual question. Presumably landlords have fire insurance.
Yeah, typically, yes, yeah.
Typically, yes.
In fact, I think they have to.
Would, if, if, would the fire insurance on a rental property, I just need to be educated on this, would that include a landlord's, would that include any responsibility for relocating tenants or not?
I don't believe it does. I, again, I'm not a, I'm not a licensed realtor. I am not a property manager. I can check with my members, but my gut feeling would be that as it's quite unusual for a municipality to require relocation, as I said, I think we would be the only city in Illinois doing that, I, I think, I, I think that would be out of the normal business experience for a property manager or landlord. I, I can check with my members. I'm just a humble, humble governmental affairs professional, so.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Esther Pat?
Thank you. I'm Esther Pat, 706 South Kohler, and I'm speaking to you on behalf of the Champaign-Urbana Tenant Union. First, let me just answer a question. If you look at your own homeowner's insurance policy, Eric, I think you'll find out the answer. If you own property that is rental, or if you have, if you have a tenant, one or more tenants, and fire damages the property, your insurance compensates you for your loss of rental income. But I'm not aware, and I was saying, no one has that anywhere, but I'm not aware of it ever compensating the, requiring, you know, compensating the tenants for their cost of finding a new place or whatever. And that's certainly, in my professional experience, it's never happened that way. But again, this ordinance does not apply to the place being destroyed by fire. It applies to one particular type of circumstance, and I think the point that Mr. Malone raised and that, and that Diane Marlin pointed out too, about the difference in "or" and "and" there, I don't, I mean, I understand why you put rental registration in there, but the, the point is, anytime the city's going to designate a rental property as unlawful to occupy, that's when this kicks in. That's the purpose of this ordinance. And actually, I agree with Mr. Malone on one point. There, in that Section 12.5-46, in addition to changing that "or" to an "and," when it says the tenant's own illegal conduct, I think you really want to, I think if you just took out the word "illegal," that would, that would do it. Because it's really, if, if the cause, if the place is being closed down because of the tenant's conduct, then yeah, that tenant doesn't get, doesn't get the assistance altogether. In response to, just a perception here, Carol Ammons mentioned that the landlord's the one who decides whether it's a moving van or what. No, no, that's not the way this is written. And the whole point of this is, when you are condemning a property because, or you're declaring a place unfit for habitation because the landlord has been so bad that you not leave it up to that very bad landlord to handle the relocation of the tenants because they're obviously not handling things, otherwise they wouldn't be in that situation, and that's why you're spelling out what they owe. If, I don't, I don't, to me, that doesn't seem, there's any ambiguity to either a moving van or a moving company. Yeah, moving companies charge different amounts, but, I mean, I suppose you research it and see just how much they vary, but pretty much- see just how much they vary, but pretty much, if you have to move in three days, you take whichever moving company will come. And it's, it might be hard to get a moving company to come, and I know sometimes you'll give people more than three days. On the hotel issue that Mr. Malone raised, I mean, I suppose you could, I would, obviously, please don't put a dollar limit on anything, a dollar amount, because dollar amounts change from year to year. That's always a mistake. I mean, you could say, you could say, there's actually language already in chapter 12.5 of the city code, in the section, I just don't have it in front of me, but in the, the section has to do with the landlord's failure to maintain the property, that if, if there's a denial of essential service, it's a repair deduct section, that a tenant can get, can, can stay in a hotel during the time that they don't have heat or water or whatever. And that's one of the options that's in the landlord-tenant ordinance. And the language that Maria Ryan wrote, that's in there, still something, it's something along the lines of, of the cost of a hotel not to exceed the average cost of hotel motels in the city of Urbana. You know, so they don't have to go to Motel 6, but it's, they're actually red within, it's kind of cheap too, I hear in Champaign, but, but that they, yeah, they couldn't go to Hampton or, or, or Eastland Suites or something like that, because that's more than the average. You know, other than that, I mean, I think it's, I, I think this is real clear cut, as far as what the landlord has to pay out, that it's refund of prepaid rent, refund of the balance of the current month's rent, refund of the security deposit, the cost of the move, either a moving van or a moving company, and don't limit it to a van, please, because you, you have older people who can't carry their own stuff, I mean, and people have big furniture. I couldn't even do, I mean, I couldn't just, a moving van wouldn't do it for me, who's going to carry my furniture? And, and the tenant, the utility connection is set. If you were inclined to make any change, and I don't think it's necessary, because I think, you know, I think 14 days in a hotel is actually kind of stingy, if you, if you are going to close, to clear a place unfit for habitation, anytime before the 16th or 17th of the month, anytime between the 1st and the, and the, and the, and the 15th, people are going to be in a tough spot if they only get 14 days for a hotel, because a lot of people are not going to be able to move until the 1st of the next month. So, this is not as much as it should have been. I don't see that you need to change it more, but, I mean, if you just want to clarify to just say up to 14 days in a hotel, period, I don't know why anyone would continue staying in a hotel if they could find an apartment to move into, you know, that's, you know, it, but otherwise, I think this is a good program and that, that basically, the, I mean, a good proposal. And maybe, there's no other city in Illinois who does it, but there are many cities throughout the country that provide far more protection for tenants than you're offering here. This is an incredible compromise from what's out there. And, including Seattle, entire states, the entire states of, of, of Massachusetts and New Jersey, it's a state law everywhere in those cities, that the landlord has to pay relocation assistance. And I forget what the specifics of those are now, but there were things like three times the rent. There's, there's one place, I think it's in Texas, where you can't condemn until you find, until the municipality finds housing for every single person who's going to be displaced. How would you like to do that one, I'm sure? And another where they have to, they have to find, oh yeah, that one, they have to find people housing in the school district they want, and in the neighborhood they want. I mean, it's all very, very specific. This is really, this is really relocation light compared to what's out there, even though there are other places in the state that don't, don't enforce their codes, you know, don't, don't do a lot of things, but Urbana's better. Any questions?
Yeah, Charlie, go ahead.
Esther, so would you agree that there are sort of like three spots we can tighten this up? The, in that, in 12.546, the, between I and, and II there, there's the word "or," which is-
Change "or" to "and."
Should be an "and."
Oh, excuse me, Charlie? Or you could just take out the double "i."
Yeah, well, that's one of the, you know, that's, we need to figure out exactly what that's supposed to say there. I'm, I'm heading somewhere here. "Whose own illegal or negligent conduct versus whose own conduct." I don't know which one's better legally, and I'd like to know. And then on, on section 12.547, maybe incorporating the hotel stay length, language-
Yeah.
And average numbers there might be good. Those are the three areas that I'm seeing. And so, what I'd say to the council members is that I support this, but I think we probably need to send this back to legal to clarify those three points here. So, back to committee, and then back here, or something like that.
It seems to me that if you're saying violating an ordinance, you don't really need II, because rental registration is an ordinance.
Well, the, the key, the key language there is the, if the place is going to be designated as unlawful to occupy due to conditions created by the landlord, it really doesn't matter if it becomes unlawful to occupy because rental registration was pulled, or because the place was declared unfit for habitation.
Yeah, but you wouldn't pull-
Those two should happen together. I mean, if you declare it unfit for habitation, you should be pulling the rental registration for that property, because it's not registered anymore. And if they lose the rental registration, you're declaring it unlawful to occupy.
Well, you're violating an ordinance if you didn't pay the rental registration fee, if that was the only thing that causes you to lose the registration. But it would normally be because it's unfit.
Right.
I think Diane had a question or a comment?
Well, I would just say, as long as we, I, I do think this needs to go back to be cleaned up, and then it would give the other parties an opportunity to, to have some input on it as well. So, and, and I think we'll come back with something that, that's a little stronger than we've got here. So, but I think we all share the same intent, which is to deal with the people who neglect their places to the point of being condemned. So, we just have to figure out how to get there.
But we have a motion, so is there?
Bill, Mike has a.
Okay, Mike?
Yeah, I, I would just echo Diane's comments. I mean, after I had a, a chance to more thoroughly look at all this, I'm not so sure that those three questions are the only questions. I think there may be more, and, but the reason I'm not so sure of that, whether I'm right or wrong on that, is I'm not an expert at this. I appreciate your years of service on the council and your advocacy for the tenants' union. My real problem here is that this ordinance was drafted without the input of the other folks involved here, the landlords. I just, I really take exception to that. And I'm not saying anybody had ill intent, I just think nothing should get this far in the process without the input of all of the interested parties. Because we're up here trying to make the best decision for the city, not on behalf of just tenants or just landlords, but on behalf of everyone. And, so I don't think the public good has been served to this point, because there are multiple facets, multiple sides to this issue. And only one has been heard. And, and again, please don't take this personally, it's, you were given an opportunity with staff to draft this ordinance. It was put before the council without any input from anyone else. And I just think that's not appropriate. I've been told on repeated occasions that, wow, you know, outside folks should not be drafting ordinances, the staff should.
I did not draft this. I was sent, I was sent it and said, is it okay? And the first version, I read quickly, wrote back to Libby and said, yeah, it's okay. And then I read it again, said, oh, wait, there's a problem, and wrote back to her. I mean, I just want you to know that this was not written by the tenant union. This was written by Libby Tyler and whoever else on her staff works that. But, and I also will say-
Well, that's good to know.
In support, in support of, of, just in defense of Libby, the population-
I'm sorry, Esther, but I don't think I asked you a question.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay.
Okay. Anyway, just to, to sum up, I'm glad to hear that it wasn't, that it wasn't drafted by you, but you obviously had collaboration, but no one else had the benefit of that collaboration. So, I think you can appreciate that, as a former alderman, that everyone ought to be able to collaborate if they have an interest. So, I really think this ought to go back and be worked on, and I'm just not so sure that those will be the only three points of contention, you know, in the final analysis.
Okay, do we have a motion to send it back to committee?
Yeah, I move to send this back to committee with at least those three specific areas addressed.
Second. Okay, so we will send it back to committee and make sure everybody has a chance to comment on it. Libby?
Yeah, certainly, there's no intention to leave anyone out. There's a very long list of covering copies of all the people we've worked with in the past on these issues. And I think Mr. Malone was contacted by some of these folks, and we do expect that input. Also, we were working under the direction of the city council and their goals and actual motions that were put forward last year. So, we do our best with the experts, and we absolutely do want the input, and happy to take comments from any interested parties.
Carol?
I just wanted to make sure that staff was clear on the motion that's been moved to return this back to committee. The intention of returning it back to committee is not to remove it from the purpose for which it came forward in the first place, which is to address the relocation primarily of poor people from condemned properties. And so, cleaning up language, I guess, for the attorney, looking at removing illegal or what, defining reasonable efforts, defining the section on the responsibility of the landlord versus the responsibility of the tenant, is what I'm looking for in cleaning up the language, so that the intent is not lost in support of moving all of the other processes forward. So, this, this language is specifically to address condemned or should be condemned property in the city of Urbana.
Anyone else? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, this is going to go back to committee and get more comments. Mike?
Okay, the committee recommended for approval Resolution Number 2014-08-043R, Resolution approving and authorizing the execution of an exclusive consulting and sales listing agreement, CBRE Inc., 200 block of South Vine Street. On behalf of the committee, I so move.
Second.
Motion by Madigan, seconded by Smythe, any discussion? Would the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Ammons?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobson?
Yes.
Mr. Madigan?
Yes.
Ms. Marlin?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
That motion carries.
The committee recommended that the council approve Resolution Number 2014-08-044R, a resolution approving modifications to the city of Urbana and Urbana Home Consortium, FY 2012-2013 Annual Action Plan, Home County TBRA Amendment. On behalf of the committee, I so move.
Second.
Motion by Madigan, seconded by Smythe, any discussion? Would the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Ammons?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobson?
Yes.
Mr. Madigan?
Yes.
Ms. Marlin?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
That motion carries. Reports of special committees? Special committees or reports of officers? Are you there for reports of officers, Libby?
Yeah.
Just so nobody forgets, the Urbana Sweet Corn Festival is this weekend, and so that's Friday, starting at 5:00, and Saturday, 11:00 to 11:00. And I know that there's still room for volunteers, if you're interested in participating. Many of us will be selling tickets, and headliner will be Eddie Money, if folks remember him. That'll be Saturday night. Also, students are coming back. Move-in day is Thursday, and the fire department is organizing information to be provided to the students as they move in. And we're looking for council volunteers will be helping. I know a few of us will be helping that day, as well as the staff members, and I'm sure Brian or Marshall Edwards and Jeremy Levy, I think, those would be the contacts if you wanted to participate on Thursday. And I know we're going from 7:30 a.m. till 3:00 p.m., but you can work a shift within that, so welcome back to the students.
Okay, thank you very much. Any other reports of officers? I have a report. We did the groundbreaking for Olympian Drive. This is the third decade that we've been working on this project, but it took a huge amount of cooperation. There was a tent full of people, everybody in that group, and plenty of people that weren't able to be there, worked on this project, and it was a real cooperation between the county and the two cities. And also, we got a lot of help from our legislators. Naomi Jacobson was there. We got the funding, and one of the hangups in Urbana, or I guess the only hangup for Urbana had been that a lot of the land is in the Champaign School District. But I think that the fact that this is going to open up Olympian Drive for development and job creation outweighs any loss to the Urbana schools. The Urbana schools are also going to benefit from this, so we got past that one. Also, I've been working on the 911 funding, and it is going to be a session at the Illinois Municipal League, which is held in September in Chicago. This one's going to be, I think it's on Saturday, the 19th of November. And we've had a lot of discussions with people around the state, and I think that we can have a good bill introduced. They're going to redo the whole telecommunications bill anyway, but I think it'd be good if we come up with specifics. And the city of Chicago has a $2, had a $250 per month fee, which included all kinds of phones, and that's gotten raised to $3.90. So, I think that is a good opportunity for the rest of the state to get maybe a statewide number, and leave it to local discretion on where we want to be in that range. Because right now, the amounts that were approved by referendum in the state of Illinois range from 50 cents a month to $5 a month. So, it depends on the local situation. And we talked about the investment policy. We found that the investment policy that we have had not been approved by the city council. I think since state law requires us to have an investment policy, I think that it should be approved by the city council. And we're going to bring one back to you in September, which would talk about the FDIC, but not specify that it's 150,000, or, I think it was 100,000, and then it was raised to 250,000. But just say that it has to be FDIC insured or collateralized. But we'll bring that to you in September, and in the meantime, we're going to go ahead and get the uncollateralized investments covered. So, I'll be happy to answer your questions if anybody has any for me. Yes?
So, is the method of covering the uncollateralized investments to actually collateralize them, or to split them up into insured deposits?
Um, collateralize them, because they're, right now, they're specific CDs.
So-
So, that'll work better.
What's the cost for that?
Um, there's a loss of some interest, but I think that just general prudence dictates, and I think our policy should be that we have it either insured or collateralized.
No, I don't disagree. I was just wondering what the cost would be, and-
Yeah, Mike Man, Mike Munson?
I think the loss of interest income would be about $17,000 through 2016.
So, an annualized cost of 8,500. We're talking about a two-year.
Yeah.
Are we talking fiscal or calendar? And, okay, I'm seeing two.
It would be, the $17,000 would be spread over three budget cycles. The last CD comes due, I believe, it's October 2016. Now granted, the biggest hit would be in this cycle, and then it begins to taper off as CDs come due, because then what they'll do is be broken up into no more than amounts less than 250, because if you invest 250, any interest as minimal as it has been, and probably will continue to be for another year or two at least, would take the amount over the 250 amount. So, we're going to leave some cushion for any interest accretion.
And what's a total amount invested that we're talking about here?
What's invested in the one bank is 4 million.
4.5 million.
Yeah, 4.5.
Okay, thank you.
Diane?
Does the bank have any responsibility in this, in terms of, wouldn't a bank know that typically municipal accounts should be collateralized?
Yes, the bank, in discussions with the comptroller, said that they were not collateralized.
And that fulfilled their responsibility?
Well, I mean, I think they should have been collateralized, and they're the ones that called it to our attention.
Years ago, or just now?
Right now.
But years ago, when they failed to collateralize it?
Well, they, that was an agreement that was made. A letter was sent to them that they could do that, but that was a violation of our policy, so that's why this has come to our attention, and why we think we should have a policy that's been approved by the council that everybody understands.
So, when it was first put into place, it didn't raise any red flags over at the bank?
Um, the, the bank, and it was, you know- The, the bank and, it was, you know, in, in discussions with the bank, apparently, because there was a letter that was sent to them.
What happened was, back in around 2009, the bank informed the former comptroller that $5 million consisting of, or made up of five CDs, a million dollars apiece, were not collateralized. The former comptroller advised the bank in writing that, that he recognized that the CDs were not collateralized, and he authorized the bank to continue retaining those CDs in uncollateralized form. This situation was discovered recently by the current comptroller, which brought the issue to light. And we can't, we could close out the CDs, but of course, then there would be a penalty for early withdrawal. So as the CDs roll over, they'll be collateralized in the next couple of days, I would imagine. But as those CDs mature over the next little over two years, they'll be reinvested either fully insured, i.e. in amounts slightly less than 250,000, or if it's advantageous to invest more, then the excess over 250 will be collateralized. That's what the policy currently provides.
And one last question? Is there an advantage to a bank not having to collateralize deposits like that?
Well, the way the collateralization is paid for is by a reduced interest rate. The key is, obviously, that interest or lower amount is paid over time, i.e. the life of the CD. Presumably, the bank has to go out, if they do not already have the securities, go out and acquire the right kind of securities to collateralize. One of the things that the new policy will do is any collateralization, and I don't recall this aspect of our policy, but when I draft, make an initial, or prepare an initial draft of the policy, the elements of collateralization will have to also fall within the types of investments that the city otherwise would be making. For instance, collateralization with T-bills with the full faith and credit of the federal government behind it, that level of collateralization. Or simply not placing in any single institution more than 240,000 dollars.
Mike?
Who's the bank?
Bucy Bank.
Thank you.
Eric?
Just speaking to Diane's question, would I, do you think I'd be roughly correct in saying that the bank has adjusted the fees so that basically it's the same to them, their bottom line, whether a deposit is collateralized or not?
I would imagine amortized over time, that's probably true. But I don't know what banking policy is in terms of acquisition of collateral and how the cost of that acquisition or how they amortize it. Clearly, for the CD's purpose, the costs are, the interest paid is reduced over time. I mean, the, the reduced payment is made over time. So they may have to, quote, advance the money. They may have the securities already within their portfolio, in which case, frankly, it's a windfall except those securities then become tied up as collateral.
Okay, under new business, there's one reappointment that I would recommend, Civilian Police Review Board Ricardo Diaz, for a term to expire June 30th, 2017. And he first started on the civilian police review board in April 2011.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, motion by Smythe, seconded by Ammons. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion carries. And I don't believe there's further business, so let's adjourn this meeting. Thank you all.